Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Chirko.
Here.
Councilmember Doby.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic whose lord stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shelley will now lead us in the invocation.
Sure, if you can bow your heads with me, please. Our gracious heavenly fathers, before you tonight, as we try to continue the city of the business, as we serve our residents as our business, we just ask that you provide us the wisdom and just the strategic plans that we need in order to move us forward in a safe, cautious, yet prudent way. We ask that as we start reopening the city and our surrounding areas, that you keep everybody just safe and continue to use the proportions and the wisdom in order for us to fully reopen and start our enjoying our wonderful community as it is. And we ask all these things in your precious name.
Amen. Okay, the Noda family has hijacked the presentations. Start with Emily.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council. I'm going to be sharing my screen right now. Yes. We are coming up on July, and it's the Parks Make Life Better Month. This is celebrated throughout July throughout the nation. It's recognized by the National Recreation and Park Association and the California Park Recreation Society. During COVID-19 and quarantine, I think more than ever, people have realized the value that space and recreational activities play a vital role in their quality of life. We have revised our Parks Make Life Better activities to include virtual and in-person programming. So first up, we're going to be having a virtual parks photography contest. This will be done through social media. So we'll be inviting the public to submit landscape photos of. An in-person activity we are repeating from last year was a really popular youth arts and crafts workshop at the community center. Pre-registration will be required, and the registration is going to be limited. Last year, we had probably, I would say, over 100 participants. It is a free workshop. And here we are splitting up into three different age groups, and there would be a limit to 15 at max per age group. Registration is available online. On July 21st, at our senior grocery program, we will be handing out a senior surprise giveaway. Currently, we're serving about 175 households, and we're still determining, trying to work with Memorial Care, get a self-care type item that we can give to our seniors. Little Cottonwood Park on July 25th at 8:00 a.m., we will be hosting a yoga in the park with social distancing, encouraging people to bring their mats and to wear a mask. This is also free. All of these activities are free. Online, participants can join in the junior ranger program, and the website is provided on this flyer. And this flyer is also on our website and our digital recreation brochure. Returning from last year is our popular pop-up dog park through the month of July, from July 3rd through the 30th at Laurel Park. We will be implementing further, I guess, social distancing rules and encouraging the public to not pet animals that are not their own. We will also be instituting a virtual parks run, which basically they can, anybody from the public can run during the month of July. We'll provide a course map, and it's just a kind of for fun activity and to encourage fitness. We'll also be encouraging families to do a backyard campout in July. We'll be hosting social media contests through our Facebook, Instagram. We will be having available marigold flower seeds at the community center that folks can pick up. And we will be hosting a do-it-yourself DIY floral arrangement, how to prepare one from flowers from your own backyard. That'll be a video presentation on our YouTube channel. And with that, I'd like to conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Hey, Emma.
Yeah.
Sorry. Are all of those dates in the city calendar that you know you can download and sync with your own calendar?
Um, we don't have that yet. We can work on that for sure. But right now, it's just listed in the recreation brochure that's digitally available online.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protem, if I might just one small thing. There's, obviously, there's a lot of things that are going to fluctuate here with regards to putting that information out. And so, once we get a little bit closer, and I believe there will be another round of variations and businesses that come open at the end of the week, we will look to do that as well. I can tell you for one that my wife wishes that the do-it-yourself flower arrangement was last week for her birthday, and so she's a little upset that we haven't quite gotten there yet.
Okay, Ron. Are you ready for the, your presentation?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I just want to do a quick update on the small, emergency relief small business grant program. Today, we had our Zoom webinar at 11:00 a.m., where we went on and instructed the business on how to fill out the application and some eligibility requirements that we had out there. And so, I just want to again give an update that our application for businesses is opened up this coming Wednesday, June 17th at 8:00 a.m. It'll close at 5:00 p.m. on Friday, June 19. And the Zoom webinar will be, was recorded, and it will be put onto our city's website. So if those that didn't make it on to watch the Zoom webinar this morning can re-watch it. Again, the link will be on our website. So far, we marketed all to the emails that we have for our business licenses, and that was sent out last week. We've done social media posts, and we had the chamber push out information about the emergency relief small business grant program. And so, again, we're going to do a second round so to notify the businesses in the community about the grant program. And so then they will have enough time to submit their application for Wednesday, Thursday, and of course, again, the closing deadline of 5:00 p.m. on Friday. And then after that, we will continue down the timeline, and then hopefully, we'll be able to award money out to businesses to assist them in their recovery efforts. So this is just a really quick update on what have transpired since last week when we last met.
I have a quick question. Um, I've been getting notifications of other, I guess, entities that are pushing out their like fourth rounds of funding. Would we be able to put a link like on our website to some of those, for those that might not get selected for this, since there are still funds out there? And maybe if they don't get it through our city, they can still get it through one of the other entities that are like in their third and fourth round of disbursements? Or is that like a no-no?
No, depending on the type of disbursement, like for instance, if, I, I'm not quite sure what you're referring to, but if it's like a fourth round from the city of Anaheim, you know, usually.
No, it's not a city. It's like, I'll email it to you, but it's in, like list. They put on all of those webinars and seminars and how to sustain yourself and blah blah, all that. They just send an email. I'll send it to you, because I think that would be cool.
Absolutely. Any type of information or business program or assistant that are, that is, that can help Los Alamos business will be happy to put on our website.
I'm going to send you the emails that I have gotten since Monday. Today's Monday. It's last week. Send it to me.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Seeing none, we'll go to oral communications. And Wendy.
Yes, sir. As we have listed on our agenda, we requested the public to submit their comments via email. We did not receive any comments before the four o'clock deadline. Anyone wishing to address the council verbally through this teleconference was also requested to submit an email before the start of oral communications, and we did not receive any emails as well. So there are no oral communications this evening.
Okay, we're going to council announcements. Tanya, would you like to start?
Well, I think I slick, just made one. Um, and I'm looking for those emails to send to Ron now. And, oh, I can share that I got a recent appointment to the Human Relations Committee for our district too. And I'm sure Mayor, he voted for me, and I'm sure he had some strings that he pulled, which I am in great appreciation of. And I'm very excited about that recent appointment. So I'll, I want to share that with you guys. I don't know when my first meeting is, and I may get sworn in virtually, but I'm pretty excited.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dean, how about you? Join me, Dean. Hello, Dean.
Now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I got an opportunity to attend my first OCARD meeting by electronic Zoom. Very interesting and lots of good information. And I'll be meeting with them, I guess, on a monthly basis coming up. I also had an opportunity to attend the SCAG annual meeting, which was scheduled to occur out in the desert, and they wound up doing that one virtually as well. Very informative. And I expect to be sworn in at SCAG at our next meeting. I'm continuing to monitor the White House calls, which are occurring every Wednesday. And I also, at the city selection committee that Tanya mentioned, was appointed to the Emergency Medical Care Committee for the Orange County Health Agency representing the Orange County cities. So that meeting, I think, is going to be bimonthly. And that's it.
Thank you, Dean. Shelley. You.
There we go. There we go. Um, we had, the Fire Academy got their graduation two weeks ago. We did it virtually. Only the cadets were there. There were, I believe, 37 graduates. So they're now full-fledged firefighters, and we are starting our next academy very soon. So they're trying to keep, you know, that going the best that they can. We still do need firefighters, so they're trying to get them. And we'll be starting this week the virtual Mayor's and Councilmembers' Conference, and it's for the three weeks. So I'll be attending that and hitting sessions and things and reporting out anything that I've learned. But other than that, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Mark?
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. For me, I have been attending about three Mayor's meetings a week, including updates from the county. And one of those meetings included a meeting with Michelle Steele. We have to thank the supervisor for directly getting our money out to us, not going through various steps like some of the other districts did. Want to congratulate Dean and Tanya on their countywide elections and appointments. I want to congratulate Emily. I don't know what you're putting in those senior lunches, but they're like lined up all the way to Cypress to get. How many people do you think we're serving in those halls?
I think 175 houses.
How many, how many do we serve when it's not in the car, when you actually get out?
Uh, 60 to 90.
Oh, okay.
I think we've actually increased or requested to increase to 220.
I see. Okay, even my neighbors have noticed, like what's going on? Also had a meeting with Chet and with Epsom, with Rand Roser. Want to thank him for a tour of their property. They expect to be in in two months. Chet and I are betting the over, but hopefully, they'll get there. Very impressive what they're doing. Be a great addition to our community. Also, need to thank my colleagues, the Budget Standing Committee, Chet and Craig, on your behalf on our budget. I don't think it's ever been tougher than this year. And not only did we have a huge gap to overcome, which in itself would have been yeoman's light work, this, with, with all the other stuff going on, it was, people keep saying, the most fluid budget we've ever seen. And I would imagine it will require constant attention throughout, throughout the year. My own personal budget, something I never thought I'd be able to say. I got a social security check, so very happy to get one. Paying in for 54 years, but hopefully, they'll keep coming. That's it for me. Chet?
Just very quickly, sir, wanted to mention that in the next couple of days, you all will be receiving a memo from Wendy with some input from Ron and myself about reopening of city facilities. And probably most important and germane to this conversation, when exactly we're all going to start meeting in person again? At the moment, we've targeted mid-July as kind of the date to bring everybody back together. I've already gone out and gotten my haircut, so we're, we can now do it. We plan on doing, at least for the first meeting, a allowing us all to come together, practice social distancing, and still allowing the public to participate virtually so that we can work out any of the technical kinks or anything to make sure that we're prepared. And then to ultimately open it up to the public to allow them to come into the facility with social distancing and all of those safety measures in place. So I, I just wanted to let you all know that there is a light at the end of the tunnel. I'm sure that you've all grown tired of watching me on screen, so you'll get the opportunity to, you know, at least we can all deal with each other face to face. So that's, that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to the warrants. We have a motion. I'll move. Second. And Mark, second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Chirko.
Aye.
Councilmember Doby.
Yes.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll go on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless the council member requests separate actions on a specific item. Anybody like to pull anything?
I'll pull C.
C, all right. Anyone else? Give a motion for the rest, please.
I'll move.
I'll second, and I'd like to record a no vote on item F. F. Okay. So, so noted. Shelley, how would you like C? Would you like a staff report?
No, it's basically, you know, since it's, you know, the meetings are a little bit different. Oh, I'm sorry.
And can we get a roll call for the, carrying the consent calendar?
Okay.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Chirko.
Aye.
Councilmember Doby.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye, with the exception of F, as I reported.
Noted. Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll go back to C.
Okay, so going back to C. Um, no, I don't need a staff report. I just wanted to make sure that it was, is in the public record, you know, that this ADU, this isn't something that we instigated, that we endorsed. This is a state mandated thing, and we did everything in our power to keep our city looking the way it does, without being overrun by, you know, granny flats and ADUs and everything else. So this is another one of the state mandated items that we basically were told, do it or do it. So I just wanted to get that in the record for any of the public watching or reading later on about this, so it didn't look like we just rubber stamped it in. Because I know we, we had a number of people saying, please help us with this. So it's, it's just another one of the state mandate things, and that was it. And I'll, I'll move the item.
Okay. I will second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Chirko.
Aye.
Councilmember Doby.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
We'll continue on with the public hearing, the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 Annual Operating and Capital Improvement Budget. How many members of the public would like to speak, Wendy?
Let me just triple check. No, we did not receive any requests to speak.
Okay. Chet, you want to take this over?
Yes, thank you, sir. And I will be turning over in the lion's share of the presentation to, to Craig in order to provide an overview, and then the various department heads to weigh in on just their department operations, just to make sure that there's a clear record out there for the public with regards to how exactly we go about business and what exactly we're hoping to achieve in the next year. Mayor Giuri alluded to, and I will make this brief, that this is a, an incredibly difficult time to be trying to do a budget. But there's something in that that I, that I do want to mention is that the Budget Standing Committee in this council has made the decision very early on that there wasn't going to be a shrinking of responsibility, that there wasn't going to be a hand-rearing, that we were going to go forward and do a budget. I had a call earlier with a number of my colleagues at the county level, and then also with the way that some other cities are approaching the budget process, and some are adopting continuing resolutions. Some have adopted status quo, some have adopted just, we're just going to wait and see how this thing develops. I think that the Budget Standing Committee deserves a lot of credit for rolling up their sleeves and saying, no, we're going to tackle this issue now. There is an amount of fluidity to this situation that I think everyone has taken into account. We, and myself and Craig, all the department heads, have dedicated to ourselves to this idea that this is a fluid document, that this will be a budget session kind of like none other, that we will be constantly back to talk to you about how revenues are trending, how our expenses are trending, how our, our outlay of part-time capital is going, what exactly some of the impacts that we're seeing with pricing of different materials. This will continue to be a very intensive and information-driven process. And so with that, I'd actually like to turn it over to Craig to kind of provide a overview of where we started, where we're at now, and then go from there to the various departments.
All right, second here. So hopefully, you can see my screen. If I said it correctly. Yes, thank you, Chet, for the intro. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members and staff. I'm pleased to present the City of Los Alamos Fiscal Year 2021 Proposed General Fund Budget. Brief overview, would like to review and discuss this proposed budget for the general fund for the new, next fiscal year, and then seeking to move for adoptions. As you know, the proposed general fund budget for fiscal 2021, pre-gap closure, which is what we reported on May 18, should be a fund, a negative fund balance or deficit of $1,347,073. During that time, when we looked at the revenues, there's been no change to the revenues that were reported on preliminary basis. As you can see, we're proposing $13,640,247. It's a decline of about $790,000 from, from the prior fiscal year. In order to close the budget gap on the expenditure size, we worked extensively with the Budget Standing Committee staff to come up with gap closure measures. And as you can see on this slide, those measures were put in place. This is a comparison of where we were reporting on the preliminary budget. The kind of department expenditures are about $14.9 million. Under the proposed budget, we're at $13.6 million. We've been able to close that gap by having cost savings in the realm of $1.3 million, or exactly $1,361,597. That new, closing of the gap now presents a new picture. We have a positive change in fund balance or a projected surplus of $14,524 when you take into consideration the gap closure measures. The preliminary general fund budget again showed a gap of $1,347,073. Staff presented options for closing the budget gap, which included various things. Included in this was the organizational restructuring of the Development Services Department and the reorganization of the Recreation Department, moving one manager over from to services, upgrading the other remaining Recreation Manager to be acting department head. The net savings for this is $201,251. Also included freezing about 10 vacant positions, including safety and part-time. That freed up about a million, a little over a million dollars, exactly $1,66,645 in saving. And overall, three safety positions are frozen. These were the three corporals. Finance is one part-time that was frozen. City Clerk, one part-time position. Recreation, one position, and two part-time. Public Works, one full-time, and Development Services, one. The drilling down on additional savings was necessary to implement some furlough cost savings. This will amount to about $54,000 in savings. This, this will be, will become effective July 1st. It is a 5% furlough for the period of six months, July 1 through end of December. It affects the world, either executive, non-representant teachers, flight letter agreements in place for those agreements. Essentially, it'll be a four, nine and a half work schedule. In other words, being paid nine and a half hours for each of the four days. Includes City Hall closure from December 28 through December 31 in addition. This will be revisited at the end of the six months to evaluate the city's financial situation and see if necessary, necessary measures are necessary. Other cost savings included about $39,000. This is came, comes into play with staggered hiring on additional part-time savings as well. The gap closure is total of $1,361,597 in savings. The ending change in fund balance revenues over expenditures results in a positive $14,524 surplus. This is, just a reminder, this city continues to make significant cuts in contracting for city services to, in order to balance the budget, and we're going to do that this year. Just in summary, this budget includes the most updated data from HDO. It's based on their, what we, what they termed as their worst-case scenario. We wanted to make sure they were, we're using every effort we could to be very conservative. These were the numbers we received from them on April 16. It also represents best estimates and information available at the time. There was other assumptions that were used in addition. It incorporates the gap closure measures, reminding the council, these are temporary, they're not sustainable for over the long term. We're right, general fund ending balance is positive $14,524, which is now a balanced budget for fiscal year 2021. We will be coming back with at least quarterly updates as additional information becomes available, meeting with the Budget Standing Committee and the council as we move forward. With that, I would up my proportions. And we recommend for you tonight is to adopt the.
And council, if I may, I will later in the presentation, getting a little bit more into what exactly they mean from a service standpoint. Um, obviously, before we can take those questions now, or we can uh transition into the, the presentations from the various departments.
Whatever your preference at this time is fine.
Thanks, sir. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to uh Ron, who's gonna give us an overview of uh development services. Ron?
Thank you. Can everyone see the PowerPoint? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so um this is presentation for development services, development services. I'm administrators the coordination of land planning and development activity on the city, along with managing services available to the property owners, residents, and business owners of Los Alamos. So uh we, development services consists of six divisions, and we also provide staff support to the Planning Commission and Traffic Commission. So in development services, there's ten full-time um staff and three part-time staff. So um again, development services incorporates uh the community development aspect and the public works aspect of the city. Uh, here are the department matrix where we break it down into six uh divisions of development services. It's economic development, planning, building, public works, uh, community development block grant or CDBG and neighborhood preservation. Our building division is administered through a contract through Charles Abbott and Associates. Uh, that is our main um person that comes in and works over is Alan Chambers. Uh, you can see his picture right there, and he provides counter plan check and inspection service. Uh, building inspections are in-house, he's usually here every day, he has a counter service from seven-thirty to ten. Um, of course, right now with COVID nineteen, it's a little bit altered. And then um he also, the Charles Abbott and Associates also provides NPDS inspection and uh WQMP, a water quality management plan inspection for the city. Uh, here's our planning division. Um, and it's uh the associate planner, which is Tom Oliver. He uh, you know, administers the city's general plan, zoning code, uh, CDBG programs, and of course, the NPDS program. And he is the lead staff that uh to the Planning Commission. The next division that we have is a Economic Development Division. And again, we provide assistance with site selection, market and demographic information and business resources. And of course, we work on various projects, events that hopefully attracts and promotes uh businesses to Los Alamos. So right now, we're doing a big push here, but the low here is shop, eat, enjoy Los Alamos for the economic recovery. Um, the next division is Neighborhood Preservation. Um, this is uh done by Javier Marquez, who's our part-time code enforcement or preservation officer. And um what he does on a daily basis focuses to ensure compliance with various municipal codes, and he assists with historical preservation, cleanup event, and uh neighborhood improvement strategies. Uh, we have our CDBG, uh, which is federally funded program for selected capital expenditures. Uh, historically, in the past, um, they've been used for sidewalk AD ramps and alley reconstruction and allocation can vary from year to year. So we've uh, there's our pictures of our public work guys recently doing um some um uh concrete sidewalk repair around the city. And of course, our public works division uh maintains city infrastructures. Um, it's also incorporates our contract with Willdan that provides city engineering and traffic engineering. And we currently contract out portions of our street landscape maintenance. Um, street maintenance is monitor, replace, and repair street signs, uh, replace and repair asphalt, and of course, the NPDS um program. Uh, we also go out there to Public Works Division and do parks maintenance. So we, right now, a big thing to see that they're out there doing is irrigation system. Uh, they inspect playgrounds for safety. Uh, we do the annual field rehab at all the parks, including um according to our contract with McCullough um field. And then um, you know, they maintain the planters, the median islands, and then assist with various trees and shrubs and emergency um tree trimming. Um, they also do facility maintenance. Um, I think this is a special uh like talent that they have because uh basically anytime I go to them, they seem to be able to just kind of figure it out. Uh, but along with the custodial duties citywide, uh, they do um, you know, any type of building repair, whether it's electrical, plumbing, HVAC, drywall, roofing, stucco, carpentry. Um, they, they, they're very, very handy. Um, and then, of course, we um contract that with our pest uh pest abatement program. Uh, we do uh in terms of fleet maintenance, we do have a contract with Citywide, but we do some uh maintenance repair um in-house. Uh, we maintain fleet records and then we go through annually, uh, recommend vehicle replacement. So again, continue with the public work division. Um, our engineering service is administered by a contract through Willdan. Uh, that's our um engineer, that's Chris Kelly, and he provides technical assistant, project management inspection service, and plan check review. And he, and then Willdan assists with the Planning Commission and Traffic Commission. Here's our planning commissioners, right? There's our traffic commission. So I actually got to sit in on the traffic commission, I believe, last week, so I got to meet a lot of them. And um, you know, along with uh my background with the Recreation Commission, um, and I'm sure the planning commission as well, they share a passion for the city. They spend a lot of time volunteering for the city from, to look at paperwork and and to um assist the city council in any type of a task that uh is required. Um, here's our budget, it's just an overview of all the different divisions that we have. So basically, development services, um expenditures is approximately three point one million dollars. You know, the bulk of it is um, if you could look here, street maintenance at seven hundred sixty-six thousand. Um, but again, um, just general, generally, the expenditure is three point one million dollars. Um, what have we done since COVID nineteen hit? I want to stress that service to the community never ceased, right? We still uh service to the community through appointments. Uh, we still were here to answer phone calls, we were still here to answer emails. We try to update our website as much as possible, and of course, we're staying active on our social media. And I have some examples. So on our website, we have our emergency business assistance um tab, and on there, we provide resources for whenever the um county or the state um opened up the business. So we um put up graphics up there to notify the public. And then on the bottom here, it shows the different ways businesses can get assistance. So earlier in the um uh, at the beginning of our council meeting, um, council member uh Dobie um, you know, gave us some information. So we'll look at that and then um if it's pertinent to Los Alamos business, we'll put this up on this page. Uh, we stayed active on our social media, right? So as you can see there, we have our red, white, blue, and U reopening plan. That again is assistance to the businesses on the guidelines needed to reopen when we were um given direction by the county or the state. Uh, we tried to um, you know, introduce some of the public to our employees. So we would do this, uh, we call it sixty-second challenge with city staff. The one I put here is of our uh maintenance employee, Juan Moreno. Um, we did one with Tom Oliver, our associate planner as well. And then there's our, again, another social media post is our um notice of business for expanded um opening for businesses. So that is it with my presentation. Um, I'm here to answer any questions. Um, Leslie is also on here as well, and she can assist with any questions. Does anyone have any?
Any questions, please? All right. You did such a thorough job, Ron, nobody has any question.
Thank you. Okay, let me see, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen here, here.
All right, Mr. Mayor, council, um, if we can now, I'd like to move on to Recreation and Community Services from Emmeline.
Well, let me try one more screen here. Why is it not working? I apologize.
Emmeline, we saw the last one you were sharing.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not actually going to slideshow. Wendy, do you have any insight here? Let's see here.
No, I can try, start sharing it from my side and uh you'll just have to let me know when to advance the slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, we can go to the next slide. Let's try this. Okay, the Recreation and Community Services mission statement is to enhance the sense of community and create quality of life. As our tagline states, through people, parks, and programs. We use the five words that you see at the bottom, community health, family safety, education. These are the five words that the Los Alamos residents voted a few years ago to determine what quality of life means to them. Next slide. This is our organizational structure currently. As you can see, we do have a vacancy in the Recreation Manager position. Um, this is actually an older picture, but this is our, we typically operate with five full-time staff, and then we have our um kind of permanent part-time staff, and we have between thirty and fifty recreation leaders that vary by season. Next. Our divisions um are as follows, administration, community services, day camp, parks program, sports, classes, and special events. Next. Administration, for administration, this is where the full-time staff are budgeted. This division manages the financial and logistics of the Recreation Community Services Department. We also support the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Commission, which Ron um is overachiever and put a picture of his commission, and I did not, so I apologize for that. Um, but we do also provide uh support for Citywide in terms of graphics, events, and fiscal sustainability support. Next. Community Services, we provide support for the Los Alamos Senior Club, which is the nonprofit club that the city assisted to establish over forty years ago. We also have within this budget the Tuesday and Thursday Dining Joe House program, which provides restaurant-style meals to the seniors at low cost. We have our facility rentals and picnic shelter reservations. During COVID nineteen, the senior program has really demonstrated the need for social interaction and connection in keeping our seniors active and engaged within their community. Next. Our day camp program is based in the Los Alamos Community Center, and it's typically a seasonal-based programming, depending on how long the summer break is during um summer, winter, spring, and Thanksgiving. Um, the program ranges between thirty and eighty participants on a normal basis. It is a paid program with hours from seven AM to six PM with a one-to-ten ratio for staff to participants, and often used for working parents when school is not in session. Paid excursions are also typically um take place on a weekly basis. Next. Our parks program is a free drop-in program during the summer break with hours from ten-thirty to four, based at Little Cottonwood Park and Orville Lewis Park. Participants can range between twenty to seventy-five children per site, and free excursions do take place throughout the summer. Next. Our sports division is responsible for administration of our youth and adult sports programs that take place year-round. We also work with the Los Alamos Unified School District to allocate fields at school district facilities, as well as our own fields and the Oak Gymnasium. Next. Our classes division is made up of hundreds of contract classes based in our community center year-round. We also do partnerships with local businesses and uh co-sponsor classes with surrounding cities such as Seal Beach, Cypress, and Long Beach. This division also houses our preschool program and volunteer program, and the division serves all age groups year-round. Next. Special events are a key component to our programming and are well-attended in Los Alamos. With events occurring almost every month, we provide opportunities all year round for the community to come together from residents, businesses, nonprofits, and churches. Many events hit all the components of our five key words that create quality of life as it creates community, brings families together, provides health opportunities, educational opportunities, and provides safe alternatives for families. Most events are revenue offset through sponsorships, and most are offered free for the community. Smaller events are supported by the department budget. Next. Our expenditures, um, as you can see, are listed here. We have reduced our budget across the board due to COVID nineteen and preparing to bring back um programs on a case-by-case basis. Uh, we've kind of had to do that throughout this past three months. Um, I will be taking you through what was done differently in COVID nineteen, but likely we will have to revisit with the city council um as restrictions are lifted or set back in place based on guidelines from the state of California. Next. So here, I'll be showing you some of the things have we adjusted to COVID nineteen. We've gone to a virtual community center and a digital brochure. We've done classes online, activities online, um, and all available through our social media and website, and we also do weekly email blasts to our entire database with our city e-newsletter. Next. This is our YouTube channel. Um, I'd like to comment that before COVID nineteen, I didn't really have a YouTube channel, and this, these videos are not even covering all the videos that we have produced since. Um, you know, I, I do have to say that this time has been uh really challenging time, but a very creative time for our department, and it's really challenged our staff to think outside the box, um, get creative, use the resources, um, network with other, honestly, um, cities across the nation through um social media groups uh and recreation, and it's really just pushed us to really reach out um to see what we can offer the community. Next. We also instituted the um red, white, blue, and U um with Seal Beach, Rossmore, and uh Los Alamos Unified School District. Um, you can see the banners throughout all these communities. We have produced a video that um held all, also the city council members as well. Next. We also did fun activities for the community, such as our neighborhood drive-in series. Our most popular one was the Drive By Zoo, and uh we offered three other drive-bys as well. Next. Our senior grocery program, um, we mentioned earlier, we have a hundred and seventy-five councils that we um typically serve each week on Tuesdays. Uh, the police department um offers assistance as well, and uh we're just really happy that the seniors are able to obtain this service. And also, um, they, they love visiting with the staff, um, because the community center is closed, so they do get to see us on a weekly basis. Uh, we've also instituted senior wellness calls on a bi-weekly basis, and then we have our senior club Zoom calls. That was a picture of our first one, and the seniors just love connecting. Um, again, at this point, we don't know when we can have senior programs back. Um, even if we open shortly, we are not instituting senior programs until it is safe to do so. Next. We have our summer day camp program. Um, again, with limited spots available, um, we are maxing it at forty participants. Uh, summer parks program, we are actually not offering in-person this summer, but we are doing a virtual camp-in-a-box option that is free for the community. And our counselor and training and volunteer program is also a virtual option and minimal um in-person once we begin those programs. Next. This is um a picture of the first CIT and LAPP um virtual class that they held. Um, we have about thirty-eight um kids involved, and they are actually really enjoying um doing this via Zoom and getting um resources and being able to connect with their friends. Next. Um, this is our social media, we have um definitely increased, we have numerous posts per day. Um, we're very active on Facebook. Um, we are very active on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and Nextdoor. And we've also increased our um, participation and followers as well. Next. Um, I went over Parks Make Life Better Month, so I'll go ahead and skip to the next slide. And this is the last um, program that uh, I'd like to go over. We are um, going to be launching this uh, this week, so it's called My Team, My Los Al. You've seen the tagline. Um, but we are trying to um, encourage the residents to shop local, donate to the nonprofits, volunteer at the nonprofits, and at our Serve Los Al event, and just support citywide services in general, um, and just um, support their city. So you will be seeing hearts around the community, it won't be as extensive as the Red, White, Blue programs, but you will be seeing some decor, and that is my, the end of my presentation. Thank you, Wendy.
I might add, Council, just before we move on, that uh, you know, obviously, a lot of different departments had to do a lot of different things in order to keep operations moving, and uh, I don't want to, you know, sell anybody short, but I've been incredibly impressed with the Rec Department's ability to continue to push out content, and it's not, it's not stale. It's uh, constantly changing and getting better and better, and I see a lot of cities out there that are now mimicking uh, what your department is doing, so uh, my hat's off.
Any questions?
If there's uh, not any questions, I'll, I'll go ahead and move along to uh, the Police Department and uh, to the Chief.
See if I can get this going. Trying to see if you guys can see the full screen, is it the slide you're looking at?
You're not sharing your screen yet, Chief.
Oh, well. Hold on. In this thing.
It'd be hap-
Is it?
There it is.
See now? Okay. Trying to get it to go to slideshow. And you're seeing the first slide, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor and City Council, uh, this is uh, our mission statement. Is, most of you have already seen, some of this stuff, when I put this together, um, I wanted to make sure that I covered a lot of the stuff that um, not only for the public, but I know that for uh, Councilman Delby, this is the first kind of thing she's been through with the Police Department. I want to make sure that she got a good look at how we break down. This right here is not our proposed budget, this is the proposed budget I was wishing we had uh, when uh, we had the uh, when I met with Craig, because you see at the bottom, the seven million thirty-one thousand would have been, would have cost to fund our department. Um, and I'll show you the budget gap on that, you heard it from the um, from Craig on that, but you're going to uh, I'll walk you through it at the very last slide. Uh, but these are what the department's budget codes are and what they're broken down in. You have uh, Patrol, uh, Five Twenty-two, and then Investigations, Records and Evidence, Communications, Technology, our Community Outreach Programs, our Youth Programs, and then Traffic, and of course, uh, which has become very vital for us over the last, uh, since COVID nineteen, and, and obviously the Pro Testing and everything else is in Civil unrest is the emergency preparedness part of our um, department. Uh, our Police Department Staffing Overview shows us to be twenty-four sworn officers. This is the breakdown of that. Um, essentially, we're twenty-four sworn, but we've always had um, one unfunded. Last year or the year before that, I had twenty-five with one unfunded. And if you recall, um, Mayor and the Council, that I had uh, reorged and civilianized uh, the Admin Corporal, and then brought in uh, our Deputy, I mean, our um, Division Chief uh, for, to serve as our Emergency Services Coordinator, and Robert Acosta's done an incredible job doing that. Um, and I also created our, our Civilian Liaison Officer, who's been uh, the primary person in charge of our social media, uh, press releases, and uh, a lot of other events that we've uh, put on. She's the one that organizes the community outreach for us. This right here is uh, uh, might be a little bit difficult to see because it's small, but the org chart, it's typical of any org chart with, you know, you have the Chief at the very top, you have the two Captains. Purpose for showing you this is just to kind of give you a different visual of, of how their um, breakdown is. So if you notice, the Captain of Operations Division has pretty much everybody that's in uniform, and you go from Patrol to Traffic, and our Youth Services and Homeland Security. And then the Captain of Services is really the business of running the business of a Police Department, uh, as well as having the Detective Bureau. So he's truly a Support Services um, Captain, that I, I probably work with him more than uh, the other Captain, because we're constantly talking about budget and those kinds of things, and procurement, and contracts, and all the liability issues, and, and all those personnel investigations. So he's, he's the guy I spend a lot of time with, but because of what's been going on lately, I do spend an inordinate amount of times uh, with our Captain in Operations with Marie O'Connell. Uh, Police Department Administration, Staffing and Functions, there's the three of your Command Staff, along with my um, Department Secretary Veronica, Veronica, who's uh, helped us a great deal in trying to organize all of these efforts that we have. But you can see kind of what we do, uh, kind of a high overview of the things that uh, really that I'm, I'm kind of responsible for, and I, and some of that stuff I go out to uh, my Captains, and a lot, uh, some of this really goes towards the um, Services side. And then we have really the Divisions, so you can see it, there are two different divisions in the Police Department. There's an Operations Division and the Support Services, like I spoke about. And this is just another way of looking at it, when you look at the programs that we do, you know, with Patrol, you'll see Photo Enforcement is actually on, on the Operations side, as well as um, the one thing we're moving over is Personnel and Training. It typically was on, on the Operations side at this department when I first got here, and so now I've started moving that, transitioning that to Support Services by, uh, kind of like this budget's fluid, our, our org is, uh, chart is kind of fluid in some ways too, in terms of the responsibilities and roles, so I'm moving that over to be more of a Support Services role where it actually truly belongs. And then our Police Department Patrol Staffing Outputs, uh, just so you uh, have an idea of that. Um, typically, we run four shifts in Patrol. We run a Monday, uh, a day shift, uh, Monday night, Monday through Wednesday, day shift, and, and uh, night shift, and then a Thursday through Saturday, uh, day and night shift, and then they have a overlap shift that they'll work, and they pick up on, so. Actually, it's Friday through Sunday, and then the overlap is Thursday. So um, what you have here is kind of what our complement uh, would normally look like. Some, we're a little bit down on officers right now, as you're aware, with the three vacancies that we're keeping open, and then the staggering of those hirings. But I wanted to show you the first response for Safety, Security, uh, for the community, because um, it's not been easy with COVID nineteen, obviously. We've had, fortunately, we've had Robert Acosta that's really been doing a great job with briefings with our um, with our Patrol Staff and telling them how best to, you know, keep themselves safe from infection, and we've been following those protocols and standards. But um, I think partially due to a lack of officers um, on our uh, Patrol Force, we're seeing our average response time to Priority One uh, kind of creep a little bit. Uh, we've always been under the three-minute mark, and now we're at three oh seven, which is still a, a solid time to respond to a Priority One call, but we like to be somewhere near the two thirty to, you know, to fifty range. Um, Officer Initiated Activities, those are car stops, uh, what we call Pedestrian Checks, all those things, you can see that they're up. Uh, we have fewer officers, but our officers now that have been trained are very energized, if you will, and uh, you know, there's a thirty percent increase in their activity, and same, uh, and the Calls for Service, there's actually, um, those are calls that the police, uh, they don't get to pick and choose, they just get sent there, and they, um, there's an increase of that by six percent. But what's really interesting about this number, if you look, there's uh, almost, you know, twice as many self-initiated activity going on by the officers than there is Calls for Service. So our guys, uh, when they're not busy being sent on calls, are keeping themselves extremely busy by patrolling and doing what cops do best, and, and uh, protecting the area, making contact with uh, people that um, that, and a number of them, you'll see in a minute, uh, wind up going to jail by those contacts. Enforcing Laws and Apprehending Criminal, the arrest is up by twenty-six percent. Reports and Investigations, they're up by seven percent, as you would imagine, because the arrest, you have a report for every one of those things. One of the things I'm happy to report, and you've been seeing this in the news, obviously, uh, since uh, George Floyd's death, is the use of force uh, that officers use, and um, and some of the uh, reform that's going on throughout our country, and specifically in the state of California. A lot of that work actually has been done since last year um, by law enforcement leadership in the state, but our use of force, we have one use of force, and none of the uh, use of force that we have met the criteria for Cal, uh, California Department of Justice reporting, and um, and just, I'm sorry, and then uh, we have s- uh, a dozen registered uh, sex offenders, and then uh, we had three SWAT call-outs, and not in our city. And um, is there a question on this slide? I'll just stop for a moment. Okay. Just so you know, that use of force uh, was the officers were in pursuit, uh, were in a short foot pursuit after a suspect, and then tackled him to the ground, and then the uh, the person started to struggle with the officers and fight them, and they wound up throwing, I think, uh, three or four punches directed towards him to, uh, they call them um, deflection blows to get him deflected so they can grab for an arm or something like that, and that's what happened, and he didn't suffer any injuries. Um, so our Police Department Triumphs, Larry Simons, are uh, uh, Regional uh, Special Weapons and Tactics Team, we have three operators, and um, that are currently vacant because of our uh, numbers. We don't have anybody actually serving on the SWAT team, although we're still being served by the SWAT team, we need them. Uh, we have one Crisis Negotiation Team member, and actually, that person left just not too long ago, so we're down that position. We do have one um, uh, um, Tactical Dispatcher, and that actually happens to be my secretary, that Veronica runs uh, in, in that circle of Police Dispatching, so she assists with that. We have a Homeless Liaison Team, you can see two Office, uh, one Sergeant, two Officers. Um, the Terrorism Liaison, we have two of those folks trained up, and then we have a Range Staff. And then our Field Training Officers, which is ran by one Sergeant and three Officers slash Corporal run that program to train our newest officers. In the um, Detective Bureau, you have one Sergeant, two Detectives typically, but we have a vacancy due to staffing. So what I did uh, a little while back was to bring in a part-time person who was intent, a guy named Mark Gutierrez, who was a retired District um, DA Investigator. He was actually a Supervisor, and did all the major su- uh, investigations, officer-involved shootings, and, and such, and uh, political corruption, and so he actually is an incredible uh, asset to us, and has taught a lot of our new people that have gone through there, and our newest guy that's in there right now, um, a lot about writing warrants and stuff like that, so we've been very um, lucky and fortunate to have brought him on. Uh, and what they do typically is, obviously, they write the supplemental reports, follow-up investigations, and they prepare the cases for the District Attorney to file. Uh, Police Department Investigation Bureau also does, you know, we do the typical stuff you see on television, right? You do the Conduct Surveillance Operations, we prepare search warrants and serve warrants, uh, perform PRCS, but PRCS is uh, and probation sweeps are typically those early-release prisoners. Um, and uh, so we do those kinds of sweeps along with uh, probation. And um, and we also deliver community safety presentations, and they um, done several of those this past year. The, they've investigated two-hundred-and-fourteen criminal cases, and have made twenty-seven arrests just in the Detective Bureau alone. Um, the Police Department Investigation Bureau is also where we do our Personnel and Training out of, and uh, what's uh, the big number here is sixty-one interviews we did last year, and uh, and you know, we have a lot of um, attrition going on at the agency, and mo- most of you are aware of that, and you know, we lost like six people almost in one field swoop, and it continued. So you see that we done, we have done or completed like twelve background investigations, and, and recruitment of uh, sworn and non-sworn twelve employees altogether. So we're really moving on uh, on that aspect, and they're doing a great job. Uh, Police Department Records and Property and Evidence, we do a lot of work for two Record Specialists and a Part-Time Police Record. We are having a position we're leaving vacant for right now, as a Part-Time Police Aid for um, records, but, and that's uh, it's a little bit tough, but these guys, these, actually, right now, these ladies do an incredible job with uh, processing over eight-hundred-and-twenty records annually. Uh, there are, you know, if you look at these numbers, there's, it's, they track fifteen-hundred subpoenas, and uh, in fingerprint, uh, forty of our uh, city employee applicants, besides meeting all the CLETS and FBI and CGIS audits, which is all criminal history searches, uh, that uh, if you lose that connection, you lose it for a long time, and then you can't run anybody, that becomes very problematic for an agency to uh, be able to u- to utilize that system through a third party like the uh, Sheriff's Department or something. So uh, you have to stay on top of it, and our, and our crew does. Um, in terms of Customer Service Requests, you see they have thirteen, over thirteen thousand uh, public inquiries annually from there. Uh, they just do a ton of work, you know, and, and you, and you look at the report copies requested, you know, um, a thousand annually, we have over, I mean, close to five hundred people walking into the Police Department every year for some uh, reason or another, and asking for requests from our Records folks. And then you go to our Police Department Communications Technology, we all know that that's through Westcom. Uh, it's a JPA that we're a part of, um, and uh, the money that we pay into that is, you know, somewhere near about six-hundred thousand dollars, but we uh, we provides us with the Police Communications, we also pay for the annual backbone for the uh, eight-hundred megahertz and radio repair, the CAT RMS uh, maintenance, and uh, and a bunch of contractual maintenance um, that we use, uh, contractual items that we use throughout the county, um, like mugshots and fingerprinting and stuff like that. Um, the Police Department Communications Technology Continued has uh, a number of projects, and one was the CAT RMS System that went live in November of two thousand seventeen. We are still working on different aspects of it, it hasn't completely been brought to, it, it's functional, everything's working, but there are so many things that, so robust, that there are things like um, a dashboard that we haven't even been able to uh, get on yet, but we're all doing all the data and the, because you got to have data input and um, and uh, get it in there before you can actually bring up your dashboard that's, has meaningful information on it. Then we have uh, our next-gen eight-hundred megahertz, uh, we got those finally put together. It says uh, you know, two thousand eighteen, we cut over, but two thousand nineteen is when we actually uh, got every one of those things operational, the P twenty-five interoperability radios, and then um, we're doing evaluation for the replacement of our Mav or Incar Mobile Video for vehicles, as well as an evaluation of body-worn camera systems is going on. Uh, the actual purchase of those cameras isn't the big price, although it's not insignificant. Uh, but the problems, or not the problem, but the thing that's really complicated with that program is uh, not just the storage, and the, the storage prices have come down over a number, a couple of years now, but it's the redacting in that Information for Public Request Act, and people wanting the video, and uh, it's almost a, well, in a lot of departments, it's a full-time job for somebody or a team of people in terms of the redaction and uh, providing that information to the public. Um, and there's also legislation that says, once you do have it, you're required to do it, and, and in a timely manner. Uh, Police Department Community Outreach, you know, we have, um, like I said, one of the things in the, in the reorg that was done about um, a year ago was to bring on a Community Liaison Officer, and Hannah is, uh, merits this, and uh, and she actually um, has done an incredible job for us, and she also has evolved in our National Night Out, which was August last year. We hosted three uh, Coffee with the Cop events. We hosted three Coffee with the Cop events. A lot of the city folks show up to that, we really appreciate that, as well as council members, we are always invited. And then our greater, we try to now look at doing greater participation with recreation because we figured these are the folks that throw the best parties, right? And if you're going to ride on the coattails of anybody and try to get a crowd to listen to what you have to say, just go to one of their parties, they're going to have a big party. I think the only one that we weren't, because of staffing and other issues, weren't able to attend was the Winterland, which is an incredibly well-done event. Our community outreach in terms of area command, some of you remember the area command. It was, what it was, was kind of a team-based, you know, like it says, a geographical approach to looking at things in our city and it was based on like neighborhoods, like, you know, Highland, Old Town, all this kind of stuff and Cary Road. And so what I started looking at was that it really wasn't producing the kind of results that we wanted on that. So as we, because we went to districting for our councils, I was thinking that it would probably benefit us if we actually start breaking down that geographic boundaries to the council districts so that we can give kind of eyes on and some vision to the council members representing those districts and know what activities going on then to have greater situational awareness, be able to answer more questions. Part of that is also looking at what I was, what I'm really interested in is trying to get to a a app kind of form, a mobile app form, so that we can post a lot of this stuff on there. It'll be easy access for people to use and know their districts, know the entire city if they want. And I think they'll be able to interact with the department on these things. And I think it brings another added value to our community. We just need to do a little bit more research on that and try to make sure we can, that the system is as robust as we need it, but isn't so robust that we'll never, we'll pay for something we'll never use. And then youth services, our school resource officer is mostly where we, we just recently, our school resource officer is left to another agency. And, but we already have people that are trained up, one specifically, to fill that role if and when needed. We know that the, I know that most of you saw that the school said that they were cutting their budget by eight percent, I believe, and we feel their pain because, you know, the police department looks like it's about an eight percent, almost nine percent cut in their budget too. So our program is, you know, if you look at what we do, we do, we do a significant amount of things at the school and just off the campus for various leadership programs, the reality parties and as well as, you know, while we're there, we do student drug evaluations. And we sit on the school attendance review board, we host about thirteen of them last year. We did drug take, and so the school resource officer has done an incredible job in in being on campus and when he can. This year was different for us because before we had an contract where it kind of told us that if we had to be there, we were limited in terms of the use of that officer. This year, because of shortages, that officer spent a lot of time backfilling for us. And we had the option to do that without being penalized for being in violation of some sort of MOU or contract in place. Our Police Department Traffic Bureau staffing and functions, you know that the motor officer is currently vacant. That's really just due to just staffing shortages. We need them on patrol to fulfill the patrol, the primary role of our police department. And with that, you see that we have two of our photo enforcement officers that are still here, still doing that job. While COVID nineteen was around, was happening and we were completely closed down, they weren't actually, they were working from home as best they could, as well as a number of staff members in the police department that could, but the reality is that almost every one of the police, all the police officers, as well as the police command, were all responding to work and working through COVID nineteen. And when, and these folks were actually responding or working from home and doing the Red Flex photo enforcement for us. Police Department Traffic Activity and Outputs, you know, you look at, even though we're, you know, I think the city manager always says we punch well above our weight. And I, I think that our officers are doing the same thing, their arrest stats are up, their moving violations are up, they're out there really hustling and working, as I indicated earlier. The red light citations is about the same as it always is, it'll be lower, obviously, in the twenty twenty year because of, because of COVID nineteen. But the injury collisions, I'm happy to report, are down forty-one percent. Non-injury collisions are down thirty-eight percent. A lot of that has to do with this number up here being high when you start doing a lot of traffic enforcement and education, less accidents happen, that's the reason why we do traffic enforcement. Our Sirius, our Star Team had seven callouts this last year, one of them was in Los Alamos. As I'm sure you remember, we had a number of situations and even as recently with accidents of such severity. Public education enforcement campaigns are something that we focus on. Like I said, our emergency response, our emergency preparedness is being ran, all of this stuff is being ran through our emergency services coordinator. And these are all the things that Chief Robert Acosta has done for us. Our terrorism liaison officer is actually, coordinator is actually Sergeant Krogman. But everything else, you see that Robert has been really busy, even with our first neighbor to neighbor event we held, and we're going to hold three more. And it's really good for emergency preparedness and teaching people a lot of what's out there, the resources, and just getting together with their neighbors and seeing that happen. The police department has a number of special funds, police capital equipment replacement fund, and we thank the wisdom of the council for that because it allows us to maintain our equipment and replace the CAT RMS system when it's time to do that, you know, they usually have a lifespan of about fifteen years or so. The BSCC is the Board of State of Community Corrections. They've given us a one-time money to use for at-risk youth, the homeless and all that, so in crisis intervention training, so we've used some of that money, some of the people have benefited within our city. It's Casa Usho that we also donated, or not donated, but provided some funding for one of the city-run programs that we have and some of our youth academy. Our asset forfeiture, which is usually obviously drug-related type of situation, that money has been, we've used, I think, pretty much all of the money within our asset forfeiture on this last round, we haven't done a lot of narcotic enforcement, but we were able to replace all the map, mobile data computers in our patrol vehicles with new systems and they are working wonderfully. And then just to give you a quick glimpse of our Part One crimes, as you can see, they've gone down. And except for this, if you look at this blue line, it's at the very end, you'll see where the blue line has has kind of taken a little bit of a climb. And a lot of that is really a result of property crime, it's not a result of violent crime. And part of that is because of a lot of these, some of these early releases and really some of the actual effects of Prop forty-seven that are currently in place right now and have been for a couple of years now. So we're seeing that, and we're also seeing it went through, when COVID nineteen broke out, there was also, and it's not on this chart, but it was COVID nineteen broke out, we saw that that we're starting to have more property crimes, more stolen vehicles and such from people that are being released from the jails and prisons early because of fear of having COVID nineteen be a problem within the jails. And as you, as I reflected or spoke about earlier about the traffic collisions, you can see, I came on in two thousand sixteen about here, about here, and then you can see the reduction. And it wasn't because of me, I wish I could take credit for that, but it's because of the hard work that I think our offices are doing, doing traffic enforcement. And of course, I think our, I believe that the Red Flex is really responsible for maintaining the low accident rate and certainly injury that would occur in the intersections that are some of our busiest intersections and those with pedestrians as well. The gap and how to bridge the gap, earlier I showed you that wishful number of seven million, thirty-one thousand, some change. The gap of the PD is really about six hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and fifty or forty-nine. The measures to bridge the gap were as Craig had earlier announced, maintain not funding one sworn officer that we don't do, it's part of built-in into the budget. And then keep three officer positions vacant, which are right now corporal positions. We're keeping one part-time police aide vacant, we normally have four. And then, and then obviously placing the police management, chief and both captains on furlough. And so we reduced that budget from that seven million, thirty-one thousand, two seventy-seven down to this number. And we have about an eight point nine seven percent reduction in our budget. So with that, that's my presentation. Mayor and members of city council, if there are any questions, clarifications or concerns.
Thank you, Chief, any questions? I guess we covered it all. Jet, back to you.
So with that, I actually would like to basically just very quickly as, well, go over both the administration and then slowly kind of work through just the general overview of the budget itself. Just want to make sure that everyone can see my screen correctly.
Looks good.
Okay. So first, just administration in general. So council, as you know, obviously, having our citizens right there at the top and then the city council elected by them and your appointments to the city commissions. You have three main employees, your city attorney, myself and the city clerk. And then underneath that, the four departments that reported to me through finance, police, development services and recreation. Obviously, you've already gotten a highlight of what exactly they do. But I'd like to talk a little bit about the internal structure and I'll call this kind of the support services of the city, the things that happen behind the scenes and who actually gets them done for you during the day. Within the city manager's office, you have two full-time staff, myself and then Chelsea. And Chelsea really is my right hand. I have not seen a city that has, I will call it this limited number of employees when it comes to actually handling the HR function in and of itself.
Really quick, your slides aren't advancing.
My slides aren't advancing?
No.
On slide one.
Yeah.
Oh. Still on the slide one. It's not the slideshow format. We're seeing the whole.
Hold on just one second here.
I think Chief was trying to get your attention to tell you. I saw you, Chief.
All right, let me try this one more time. Is that working? Now I guess I need to make sure that it's advancing, right? Everybody see that advance?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. So where I left off is within the city manager's office, obviously it's Chelsea and myself. Just from a structural standpoint, there is a lot of work that is coming out of the city manager's office just with regards to the management of trying to coordinate the messages that are going out to the public, the keeping track of different legislation as it goes through the both state and the federal process. And also just everything that we have going on with regards to COVID nineteen. I will give Chelsea a huge amount of credit that she has been able to continue to keep track of all of those HR functions while we've added all of these additional pieces to her plate. We also are supported by David Kane, our fiscal sustainability manager, which we'll talk a little bit more about in the coming months. Then also our frontline receptionists, who I will tell you are inundated with calls with regards to everything from what's open to what exactly little pieces of information here or there or where they can find it, so my hats off to them as well. Then moving down, we have
Are those pictures, Jet, your new facilities?
You know, I was going to add a joke that I don't know where exactly that city manager's office is, but once we maybe get around to building a new city hall, I would not mind something of rich mahogany. I just don't see it in my future. I'll admit the same for the city clerk, she obviously does not have those nice digs. But an important point to remember that Wendy is doing this by herself at this point. We have frozen, are proposing to freeze the part-time staff position in there, which obviously will create some, some issues with regards to obviously PRA requests, working with the agenda and getting information out to the public in a timely manner. How we will be looking at ways to pull our receptionist core into that as well in order to help alleviate some of that strain. And then in finance, we have our interim director in Craig and then Ryan as accountant and our finance assistant, Norma. The breakdown of just the finance department in and of itself is always a difficult thing from the standpoint of ensuring that you have adequate internal controls. This is outside of the independent audits that we do, where we bring in an auditing from the outside to fact-check ourselves to make sure that we're following the proper process. There has to be a certain level of internal security that ensures that people aren't taking advantage of the system, where audits are great at finding out something that's happened in the past. We want to make sure that we're preventing something from actually happening. There's been obviously a number of cities around Orange County and throughout California have experienced issues with, you know, having issues with their internal controls. But I believe that given the three people that we have in place and then including myself with some oversight, that we have adequate controls in place. That being said, it still is a significant amount of work to ensure that the internal financial workings of the city are going according to plan. You'll notice that they are running as proposed without a special project coordinator. That does take time away from doing our, ensuring that our fake statements all reconcile to ensuring that we're answering all questions coming in from the public with regards to different elements of our budget. It is a, it is a very large task and, you know, a lot to be done, but just three people. I'll very briefly go through the budgets related to each one of the departments. Here you have the city council budget, which you can see shows no change from the year last year. That is keeping everything the same as it was before, so no increases there. Within the city manager clerk budget, you're seeing a general or a small decline in the overall cost of about twenty-six thousand dollars. And that's equated to a reduction in staffing costs, salaries related to the furloughs. And then there are some small increases within those departments. The largest being due to the upcoming election in November, which was about thirty-eight thousand. And then also a small increase in supplies. And the reasoning for that is knowing that as time goes on, that we are going to have to be providing additional information out to the public. We don't have the ability as of yet to go out and do this in mass gathering type settings, which would probably be our preference. So we're going to revert to some of our more old-school manner of getting the information out, which will include some mailers, which obviously have an associated cost to them. But we are still able to bring in both of those department budgets lower than what they were the year before. And then obviously, within the finance department itself, we have a significant reduction related to salaries and then also some additional reductions related to renegotiation of contracts and such that Craig has been able to identify. Before I move on to talk about I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was to say, before I move on to talk just about the, uh, budget in general, uh, was there any questions specific to those three, uh, departments? Okay, not, not hearing any. I just want to bring this back to kind of the macro level for a moment. You all remember that we were trying to solve for a one point three million dollar issue at the end of the day. Obviously that is a very large number for a city of our size and our budget. Um, I again commend the, the budget standing committee and the council for tackling that head on. Um, if we were to enact all of the proposed cap closure measures, uh, we would end in the black, as it were. Um, uh, to the good of about fourteen thousand dollars, which again is, I think is no small feat, especially for a city that has been consistently cutting for the last ten years. I've, uh, done a, a lot of research into the measures that have been taken by the city over the past ten years, going back to the, the great recession. And it is significant to note that in each one of the budget years, there's been an overall reduction uh, with regards to salary, but also to personnel. Um, from two thousand nine to two thousand nineteen or to this last adopted budget, there was over twenty five, um, personnel positions that were cut from the budget. And that is significant just in by a way of mentioning that you already had cut and done a significant job in controlling costs, meaning that there is very little left in this budget. And, uh, I know that the budget standing committee will share, uh, my sentiment that as we went through this budget, um, we, it became clear how little there really was to cut when it started to talk about what exactly that impact was going to be on overall services that we were providing to our residents. Um, I do want to kind of talk about a few of those things, but first just allow me to say that I do believe that this budget allows for us to, um, provide service in a responsible manner. Um, all of the approaches that we've taken in order to build this budget, um, were built on fiscal conservative models and projections. And also, um, it does allow for an amount of a flexibility with regards to how exactly we approach our structure moving forward. And that was one of the key elements that I wanted to ensure was built into this budget that we weren't locked into particularly going one way or another, that if there were changes from the state, if there were changes at the federal level, if situation here were to get better or worse, that we were able to press on those levers with equal measure in order to put ourselves in the best position to serve our residents and our business. I wanted to touch briefly just on the overall reductions themselves. Um, obviously the reorganization of the development service and the recreation department allows me to take two very bright and talented individuals and put them into positions of, um, leading departments. I think that this is a good thing, just an overall growth. Um, that being said, this is a big responsibility for these individuals to step into. I have nothing but confidence in them. Um, but we'll need to be ensured that we are helping them along the way to ensure that we, uh, continue to keep our foot on the gas and achieve what we can achieve. Uh, the second, with the freezing of these positions and holding them vacant, those are positions kind of like the chief alluded to, that in a perfect world, if we were going to be doing everything that we want to do and provide the services we, the way that we want to provide them, that we would have, um, you know, losing three positions within the safety, um, division. That's a, that's a shift. I mean, that's a lot of, uh, police time that is not going to be available to us. Within the part finance, that one part-timer does a significant amount of work with regarding how exactly, um, our finances are managed. Then the city clerk, obviously it impacts the way that we interact with our public and how exactly they perceive the turnaround time on request for information and ultimately, um, the quality of that information that they get. Uh, within the recreation department, obviously there's going to be large impacts with the way that we turn around and, uh, provide services to, um, our residents, given the, uh, the challenges that we're facing with, uh, COVID nineteen. Um, I believe that that is one area that we are going to see a significant amount of flexing back and forth as we move through the year, um, with regards to our need to bring on additional, uh, part-time staff and our decision as to whether or not, uh, certain events are going to take place. Uh, we are currently planning that we will be doing everything that we can do, given the county health orders and such. But, uh, again, within that department specifically, there will be a lot of fluidity. Uh, within public works itself, and again, it's a, a service that largely goes unsung, but we will be down a position there, which means that projects will take longer and, uh, there will be, um, just in terms of scheduling, uh, more constraints to what exactly we're able to achieve. And then within development services, uh, obviously the reduction of, uh, of a full-time code enforcement position, uh, will have its impacts as to how exactly we go about ensuring the quality of life with, uh, within our city. Uh, moving on from there, uh, this is the one that is, you know, is a deep kind of, uh, feeling of, no, just I'm sorry, I'm searching for the right word. I, there's a position here that obviously these people are the ones that are doing the work on a day in, day out basis. There are people on the front lines that are, you know, doing all of this work with all the reductions that we're talking about. The idea that we would have to then furlough and essentially cut into their pay is, uh, is not something that I'd think anybody wanted to do. I will say this for the, um, for the, for the group, for the team service, and particularly when this was discussed with them, there was not a hand wringing, there was not a, you know, why is this happening to us? It was very much a, okay, how do we come together in order to make sure that the city remains a city? Um, so I'm incredibly proud of the way that they handled that, uh, that situation. And that goes for the, uh, the non-represented group as well. And then obviously, uh, staggering hirings and additional part-time reductions, they will have their impacts as well. As we look at this budget and the cuts that are being proposed, I, I think it's important to mention, and I know Craig did, uh, very quickly, that while this proposal does work for twenty twenty one, I don't believe that is something that we can sustain long-term. And that is based on a couple of different things. One, uh, we have a number of people that are wearing a number of different hats at this point. Um, as time goes on, we will start to see cracks within that facade. And over time, those cracks will become chasms and, uh, anyone will tell you that that is, uh, not a good position for any organization to be in. Uh, the next is we will soon need to start thinking about the investments that we will need to make uh, in our city in terms of CIP projects, in terms of investments in our civic center, in terms of investments in our parks and our streets that we currently are not contemplating within this budget. Those will impact our residents, those will impact our, our, uh, businesses, and they will impact our quality of life going forward. Uh, those are, uh, significant and we're going to need to, uh, to address those. Uh, as I had mentioned before, uh, this is not a new normal for this city. This city has been in this type of situation for the last ten years. It's a situation we're going to continue to be in, um, until we can address some of the structural issues that are facing our city now that we've faced some of the, what I'll call the tactical issues that we needed to face, uh, in this year. I think the most eye-opening stat that I can give you is, uh, that the proposed budget cuts that, uh, we're showing to actually close that one point three million dollar gap, essentially equivalent to a nineteen percent reduction of full-time employees, uh, or the equivalent of that. Um, that is a staggering number, especially when you look back and say that, you know, that this city has already cut twenty-five full-time positions over the last time, ten years. I think it's a testament to the employees that you have, the organization structure that you have and the leadership that you have, that, um, by and large, I think the community would continue to say that this is a, a great place to live and that they're proud of it. Um, and the fact that you've been able to accomplish that with limited resources is nothing short of impressive. Uh, as I mentioned before, uh, there is a fluidity to this budget cycle. Um, as events continue to change, we will be back in front of you constantly to talk about those changes. And, uh, in order to make sure that we're staying one step ahead of, uh, the decisions that we will need to make. Uh, as I mentioned before, this, uh, this budget as proposed does not, uh, address any of those structural issues that we, uh, that I touched on before. And so just in closing, I just wanted to say that, you know, in the event that the mayor and city council are ready to move forward with the budget tonight, uh, staff will obviously make any necessary adjustments, um, based on your questions or comments and incorporate them into a final budget. Uh, the staff will be working with the sub, the budget standing committee in order to schedule quarterly reviews to ensure that we're on track. Uh, these will obviously come to the city council as a whole, so to ensure that we all have a good picture of where exactly we're going to be in the next coming months. And then ultimately, uh, staff will be returning to the city council in July with some presentations concerning our options in addressing the city's long-term financial sustainability. Um, again, the, uh, the goal or the task with this budget was to address our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one issues in order to put ourselves on a firm footing to be able to make decisions about what exactly our future looks like. And so with that, I, uh, obviously would, uh, ask if there's, uh, any questions from the council.
Any questions? I'd like to make a statement if I can.
Please.
I think that we owe a debt of gratitude to our existing staff, which recognizes the, um, severity of the issue that we're in. This group is always pulled together and managed to, uh, do the right thing on behalf of the citizens. Uh, I think the public should recognize that while we had city facilities closed every other Friday, uh, they're now going to be closed every Friday. And, uh, we're, we're looking at all of the options, I think, that are available moving down the line. I want to commend the, the budget standing committee and, and staff, some of which are, uh, short-term. They've joined us, uh, recently and are having to pick up, uh, and move forward in the process. So I think everybody, uh, from the city manager all the way down through the staff has done a an excellent job of trying to keep the wheels on the, uh, on the wagon. And, uh, hopefully we can find some additional funding and options moving forward here in, in the next few months. Thank you. Thank you, Dean.
Mayor, a quick comment?
Please.
I just wanted to reiterate a lot of what's been said that, you know, I just want to emphasize this is not a normal. This was a temporary stopgap, um, so we can continue doing, uh, business. Um, you know, we, you know, our sta- staff's plates have always been full. So basically what we're doing right now is we're just giving them another plate to fill up. Uh, so we need to keep in mind and keep, and do wellness checks with them, uh, to make sure that we are able to prevent cracks before they happen. Uh, we need to show a lot of grace to our staff because they are not doing less work. They're doing the same amount, if not more, work with less resources, uh, less time and less pay. So, um, I think as soon as we possibly can, we need to start going into a restoration mode to restore a lot of these services and these resources, um, so we can continue to thrive. I don't know when that's going to be, but I just want to make sure that it's front and center that we just don't get used to this. And, you know, similar to what we did during the recession, you know, cut staff by twenty-five percent or cut our budget by twenty-five percent. That just became the new normal and now we're moving on from there. So I just want to make sure that we all know this is not sustainable for any long-term and our goal is to get back to at least if not where we were.
Thank you. I guess, I feel like Dean stole my notes here because I, I too would like to thank the city employees. Uh, you represent the spirit that is Los Alamos and really can't thank you enough for stepping up at, at this tough time and hopefully we get to make it up to you as soon as we can. Also, we need to thank Mark and Shelley for the budget standing committee, for which they volunteer. This committee is a lot of work. Not only do you do much of the heavy lifting and make numerous decisions, you get to sit through it all again a week later when it's presented to the rest of us. And being on the committee, I know that's the hardest part, is looking at the budget again. It's like watching a bad movie a week later. Uh, as Shelley pointed out, we are really, not, usually we're at the end in Ju- in June. We've done our budget. However, this time we're just getting started because rolling towards November and getting those numbers out so people understand them. That's going to be a very important function for the city council. And I believe we're all up to the challenge and look forward to doing that work, starting with the July meeting. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, so city attorney usually reads the resolution.
Uh, Mayor, if I, I could please, this is a, a public hearing item, so I'd just like to confirm with the city clerk that she has not received any requests to comment on this item and that no one's online seeking to comment at this time?
Double checking. Uh, we did not receive any requests to speak, uh, through the process as outlined on the agenda. We do have two callers on the line, uh, but again, not received any requests to speak.
Right, th- thank you for that. I guess, I guess with that, uh, now known, we can close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for deliberation and possible action.
Uh, I'll move, I'll move the item if that's what's necessary to get this forward.
Yeah. Thank, thank you. And just to be clear, moving the item encompasses all four of the five recommendations as proposed by staff on the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a motion by council member Hasselbrink, seconded by Mayor Murphy. Do roll call. Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Chirko?
Aye.
Council member Dobie?
Aye.
Council member Gross?
Aye.
Council member Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to discussion item twelve A, extension for approved entitlements during the COVID nineteen pandemic. If we're getting late in the day, I'm just going to ask, is anybody against this? Do we need to discuss this?
No.
Can I make a motion to, um, support the extension?
I can.
You're my favorite mayor.
Sorry?
You're my favorite mayor right now.
Uh, Wendy, roll call vote, please.
Sorry.
You're muted.
Uh, roll call, Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Chirko?
Aye.
Council member Dobie?
Aye.
Council member Gross?
Aye.
Council member Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the, uh, Fourth of July fireworks spectacular. Uh, Jet, you want to give a quick rundown of where we are on this, please?
You bet, sir. Uh, council, uh, Ron is prepared to give you an in-depth kind of, uh, blow-by-blow as to how exactly we would accomplish this. But the long and the short is that staff has prepared a plan to, uh, which would include a drive-in option for the, uh, viewing of fireworks, uh, allowing cars only onto the base, which would be social distanced appropriately. Uh, we believe that we have set up, um, uh, a number of different places where that we would be able to park approximately two thousand three hundred vehicles. In addition to that, we would have overflow parking areas, uh, that would be able to, uh, accommodate additional cars. Uh, we are also in discussions with, uh, the base about the possibility of also being able to park on the actual flight line. Um, uh, uh, I actually had a conversation with the general about well, about five forty-five where he expressed his enthusiasm about the potential of having this event. Um, I'll, I'll share with you all a joke he made later. Uh, but, uh, I believe that staff has put together a plan that, uh, But I believe that staff has put together a plan that is workable. Obviously, it will rely heavily on personal responsibility with regards to the wearing of masks and ensuring that people are adhering to social distancing. We would do a significant amount of promotion out to the community in order to ensure that everybody knows the rules of the games before they were to approach the base. And that we would be taking appropriate steps while people are coming onto the base to provide them with flyers explaining the rules, providing temperature checks and asking screening questions. And obviously, if the Council would like me to go into more detail, I'd have Ron give you a more in-depth summary.
Does anybody like to hear more detail?
No. I, I would like to, to say though, that I think the base has taken a big leap in the process to let us have this occur, even with the restrictions. And I hope that the attendees recognize that and behave themselves so that we can do this again in 2021. And with that, I'll move the item.
Very good point, Dean. Thank you. Do you have a second?
One second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Wendy, you're on mute.
Thank you, Ron. Sorry about that. I have a motion by Councilmember Gross, seconded by Councilmember Hasselbrink to move forward with the Fourth of July event. Roll call, Mayor Mur.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Turco?
I'm mute, Mark.
You're on mute.
I'm guilty of it too. Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
I too, even though you scared me.
Did Tanya vote?
My apologies, Councilmember Dobie.
I will not be silenced. I gave my aye already.
Thank you. Having no other business, we will join this meeting until July. We'll see you at the fourth. Thank you all.
Thank you.